Good evening, Peg, how are you?
I'm well, thank you. How about you?
Good, you also?
I am, finally. I'm sorry.
Oh, we're a little late. It's 7:04. I'm gonna call the regular meeting of the board of selectmen's order. First item in this is by the Legion, by the North Carolina League of Leeds. Begging the indulgence of support, what I'd like to do is take a brief recess and answer some of the questions that the Boy Scouts who are joining us tonight may have about how our local government works. So, without objection, if I could have a motion to recess the board of selectmen.
Hold on, fifteen minutes?
Yeah.
Make a motion to recess the board of selectmen for fifteen or twenty minutes.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are in recess at 7:05. Alright, it's 7:17. I'm gonna call the meeting of the board of selecting back to order. Spare with me one second, I wanna check my notes. There is one item I'd like to add as a, an added appropriate, no, an added agenda item. We could add that as agenda item nine I. I'd like to add a discussion of the updated sexual and other unlawful harassment policy. Have a, may I have a motion, please?
Make a motion, add item nine I, discussion of the updated sexual harassment and hostile environment policy.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the added agenda item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We'll discuss that under nine I. Okay, approval of meeting minutes from April 20th, 2023, they're in your packet. If there are no additions or corrections, motion will be in order.
I move to approve the Board of Selectmen's special meeting minutes from April 20th, 2023.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Are there any corrections? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Insert it up. Public participations, one of two opportunities for members of the public to address the board of selecting. I'll first ask if there's anybody here in the room who would like to address the board and then turn to anybody who may be joining us via Zoom. Is there anybody here present who would like to address the board of selectmen? Yes, sir, please state your name and address.
Paul Anderson, eighty-nine Main Street, Brockton. I have a pretty quick idea. One is very impressed with Public Works getting all these stop lines repainted. Maybe people will use them to stop. But it was, it really is a plus for everybody. There were, some of them were getting repainted and it really loads to it, so I just wanna say my appreciation for that. A quick comment on you for the Brockton Firehouse. Very good. I think it'd make a great firehouse. My third item is that FOI billing. I've studied statutes, I studied the presentation you shared with me, Jason. There is nothing in the statute that precludes us from billing for product created. That doesn't mean that it would work, and I don't wanna cause a legal problem that costs us more money. But as taxpayer, I'd like to see these things billed, whether we collect it or not. Because if we don't bill for it, we will not get any money for it, and I don't wanna pay for it. I didn't ask for it. And I don't wanna pay for it. No, there you go. You guys are gonna do what you have to do.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Any other members of the public wish to address the board of selecting? Any of the scouts? Is there anybody online who would like to address, oh, I'm sorry, yes, sir, name and address, please.
I'm pretty sure, I just wanna say thank you to the scouts for everything you did tonight, worked together, did a good job.
Thank you.
Sure. I think this thing should go to your scout masters that volunteer their time to take you guys and bring you along with addition to your parents and upperhand and give you an opportunity. Scouts, since I was younger, have changed dramatically. Those committed individuals that are working for you guys, thank them every day because they're giving up their own family and their time to help you guys better future yourself. I thank all of you who came out here today and take a look at the process because they are our future, so good luck. And don't be afraid to speak what's on your mind. You have a question to ask, if you don't know something, ask it, that's the only way you learn. So, thank you for bringing them out, I appreciate it.
There anybody online who would like to address the members of the board of selecting? Seeing none, we'll have another opportunity later on in the agenda for public participation. Turn now to communications, there are two. First, is, I included a proclamation that I signed declaring May 21st to 27th of 2023 is Public Works Week. Part of a national campaign to recognize that Public Works employees are part of our first responder network. So, that's something we've done each of the years we've been in office, and I just wanted to share that with you. Next item is an invitation to the board of selecting to participate in the Memorial Day service and parade, which is gonna be on Monday, May 30th. You guys are ready to join, I think that we've all done that before, and that's a really fun time. I also am encouraged by the effort that's being put into kind of beating up the parade a bit, I think that's, that'll be a nice touch. So, I hope you all can join for that. How are you around? You're typically away.
Yeah.
It's May 29th, not the 30th.
Yeah. Tuesday, the 30th.
Oh, then they have a typo when they're, this must be an old letter. It is an old letter. So, it's gonna be Monday, Monday, May 29th. I haven't gotten the invitation yet, but the Melrose is also typically that Sunday at two, either two or 2:30.
Two thirty. Good thirty.
Thank you. Okay. Regarding new appointments, we have one. Michael Pillion, a former member of the building committee, has stepped forward with an interest to rejoin that. I've known Michael for a long time, I'm excited to see him stepping forward, I think all that's great things to contribute, especially as we're starting to do some fund events in the next, next year or so. May I have a motion?
Let the motion be reported, Michael Pillion, to the building committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Do we have a term on that?
Yeah, it expires on August 1st of next year.
Until August 1st of 2024.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'd ask for a motion to table agenda items eight B and C. We'll likely take those up after our executive session.
I'll move to table agenda items eight P and eight C.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. That gets us to agenda item nine A. This is an agenda item that was added at a request of the chairman of the Broadfire Commission. Chairman Madigan is here and he brought some friends. Gentlemen, come on up. You can use the podium or if you wanna bring chairs up, you can sit down at the Scott's, however everyone wants to.
Either way. We'll be very shortly. Thank you for adding us to your agenda this evening. My name is John Madigan, I'm the Fire Commissioner of East Windsor Broadway Fire Department. And with me is Deputy Commissioner Nick McSada and Assistant Fire Chief Jerry Dangrove. We are here to request the sole use of the fire station facility located at 125 Main Street, once the senior center has relocated to the new Scout Hall facility. As you're aware, our department is in need of additional space to accommodate our part-time daytime staff and overnight weekend staff who perform the firefighting duties from the station. Furthermore, we require additional space to provide offices for the fire marshal, fire commissioners, captains and lieutenants. We believe that having exclusive use of the fire station will provide us with the necessary space we need to carry out our duties effectively. Therefore, we request that the current lease agreement be amended to accommodate our request and believe that this change will not only benefit our department, but also the broader community. East Windsor Broadway Fire Department plays a vital role in protecting the lives of residents. And having exclusive use of the fire station will allow us to continue to do so in an efficient manner as possible. Thank you for considering our request, and we are happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, sir. Gentlemen, anything you want to add?
No, even though, you know, hopefully we can get this additional space, it would be very helpful and while it would help us, we're still gonna be short space, so but it's gonna be a big help for us, more and more for sure.
I just add the building is locally inadequate from an NFPA, ADA client standpoint. This gets us a lot further along than it would be in its already existing condition.
It's looking at it more of the transitional thing.
Correct.
Yeah.
There is a, the commission does have on the table and we're working through an RFP for a long-term architectural assessment and long-term strategic assessment from a professional architect for the long-term strategy of the fire department, placement, other options. So, this would get us to a good starting point for that.
So, I think what we'll do, without objection, we'll circle up with you guys about the existing lease and see what needs to be tuned up to, you know, bring forward a discussion.
Right. Right, great.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Except one question, Alan. Who actually, I forget, who actually owns that building? Or you don't? So, do we have to lease it?
We have it. We have a lease, it's like, is it a hundred-year lease or something for a dollar?
I was just curious if that was, if the changes, if it was still necessary.
It would be, it would be an amendment to the existing lease, which, which fences out certain portions of the building to be used for senior center versus the fire department, and it would just strike out the senior center and make the whole building for the fire department use by the lease.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. So well, let's throw a little curveball there. So, our next couple of agenda items involve Finance Director Amy O'Toole. Amy, you can stay there, you can come up here, you can use the podium.
Thank you.
Alright. So, Alan, you wanna run a point on this one, the discussion of the pension plan?
I don't have any paperwork about it, but I mean, oh, yeah, I do it, actually. I forget, good. Well, I'll just give you the, you've got the packet, but some time ago, the pension board kind of went through and decided, you know, tried to decide if we wanted to put it out to bid, look for somebody else, to see what was going on, you know, in the world. We've had this Webster Bank, this group, for how many years now?
Like ten?
Ten, and we've just had this kind of going and going and, and we thought that we would, anyway, we discussed it for a number of meetings about whether we thought we should RP it and possibly replace them, or if we thought we could continue, we decided to continue with them, but we forgot, we asked them to sharpen the pencil for the fee, and they did that. And I will say, we just had our meeting, it's part of my, my report later, so I'll just do it now. But we had our pension meeting last night, as you know, we meet quarterly and you know, for the, basically, the ten years that they've been doing this, where we've been running at about seven point six, seven point seven percent return overall, you know, which is underneath our assumption of like six and a quarter currently. So, they've been managing well, I guess, as well as you possibly could. And they are, they seem to be pretty dialed into what it takes to make this successful. So, in long story short, they came back and they did offer a reduction in the fee that they were charging, which is just another good thing for taxpayer and for the pension participants, so.
Thank you. Amy, anything you might add to that?
They ended up giving us a seventeen percent discount over the current rate we're paying. And they said he would make it effective for April 1st. Beginning of the quarter, if you guys pass it.
Yeah, he did say it was correct.
Any other questions or comments for either Alan or Amy? May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the recommendation from the pension commission to extend the Webster Bank beneficiary services unnecessary to maintain to catch any liabilities.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So or done.
I'm surprised you got that seventeen percent discount.
Well, we really talked about it, because we didn't want to move in the economic downturn. We thought, we made twenty, almost twenty-five percent last year, in, ending in June of 21, and then we lost twelve percent in June of 22. So, we were in that bottom, pretty low, and we were like, oh, we really wanted, because when you move assets from one manager to another, you actually have to sell them.
Right.
So, with everything being so far down, we didn't really feel like that was the right opportunity to sell off everything, because then you're making those losses real.
Yeah, and as we looked at it though.
The fee's reasonable.
The fee's reasonable, and they've just simply done a good job, much, you know, the pension is way healthier than it was ten years ago, five years ago.
Well, and on that point, I would say, you know, so we have had these guys for about ten years. But the, the previous fund manager was very laissez-faire about managing the funds, to the point where we couldn't get them to come to a meeting and give us an update on any, what they were doing. The gentleman from Webster Bank, as you know, are at each of the quarterly meetings, and they, they actively cater to the, the health of the fund, so I think it's a good relationship and, and I appreciate that they've sharpened their pencils and look forward to keep working with them. Okay, Amy, you have a memo about CNR closeouts and the gas pump. So, from time to time, I will ask Amy or she'll, she'll do it of her own accord to go through and review CNR projects that have been funded that may be completed. And if there is, if there are remaining funds after those projects are completed, that are just kind of hanging there, what she'll do is she'll submit to us a memo asking that all of those remaining funds in those projects be transferred over to the CNR unallocated line. How much to, just to basically uncumber them to any particular project, and allow for them to be reassigned to us. This time, I want you to go a review of it, there was not a whole lot that was up for ground. Twenty-five hundred dollars from the truckers' IT munis conversion and ninety-nine dollars from Parks and Recreation. So, we're, all we're looking to do is transfer that twenty-six, twenty-six hundred dollars, almost twenty-seven hundred dollars to the CNR unallocated line. That's part one. Part two, you'll recall that last summer, we made funding available for the replacement of the gas tanks at the DPW garage. Well, as is the case with many things, the price on that has gone up. So, what I, what we would like to do is take thirty thousand dollars from that unallocated line and transfer it to the, the gas pump replacement project. Anything I'm missing there?
No.
Would you roll the additional thirty thousand, was that material?
Tanks themselves.
That was what?
Price of the tanks themselves.
That, so that's the material.
The steel double wall tanks aren't available now, so we had to go with what they call a con bulk tank, which is what we have now, it's a tank surrounded by concrete.
Yeah.
Which are
More expensive.
More expensive. We're going with a larger volume tank, so this large volume tank will help us hold more, but we can't right now sufficiently hold a month's worth of fuel. The tanks aren't big enough to hold a month's worth of fuel. So, every three, every two to three weeks, we order fuel.
Yeah, it makes sense now because to cost that fuel, you can get it when it's done.
You can basically now, slowly start filling it.
Okay.
And then have to keep it, you know, full, if anything ever happened. You know, like, when bad inclement weather comes, and, you know, this first thing I do is port fuel, just in case, can't get fuel.
Yeah. Thank you.
So, for this item, for item nine C, there would be a request for two different motions. The first is to close out those two CNR project lines and transfer that fund there to CNR unallocated. And the second would be, see if we would transfer from CNR unallocated to the Public Works fuel replacement lines identified there.
Make a motion that we authorize a petition to transfer two thousand five hundred seventy-seven dollars in full sum to the unallocated CIP account in the Park and Rec Street, perfectly, and ask that the ninety-nine dollars and nine cents can be transferred to the unallocated CIP account, the state here.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
Make a motion that we authorize a petition to transfer the CNR account for replacement of the gas tanks and pumps. Thirty thousand dollars from unallocated CIP, three oh oh five four one 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 dash five seven three nine hundred two town property gas tanks and pumps. Three oh oh five four three oh four five seven three one oh five to cover the overhead expenses.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Okay. So, you'll recall that Representative Foster secured eight hundred thousand dollars for the town for the installation of lights at the Avenue of Sack facility and a playground at East Windsor Park. Those, that, we worked with the BSC group to do the architecture and engineering, the land use approval aspects of, of the playground at the park. We used their budget number, put that out to bid, and we put that out to bid and the bids came back bids came back significantly higher than the architect had projected. So, I think the two quotes that we got were for seven hundred and eighty-six thousand and four zero, eight hundred, eight hundred and one. So, we have five hundred thousand dollars available from the bond funds that the state provided through Representative Foster's request. And if we're gonna move forward with the project, which I, I would strongly suggest that we do, we would need to come up with the other three hundred and thirty thousand dollars, which sounds like a large number, and it is a large number. But the finance director has identified where, where and how we can do that without affecting our operating budget. Amy?
So, I would like to take it from the excess debt, from the debt paid down that we did a couple of years ago. We still have in our budgets some excess debt. We've used it a couple of times already this year. One for general assistance for fire, to displace people from the fire, we're still paying that, we transferred down a hundred thousand dollars. And we did, I think, a hundred and sixty-five for the body cams and dash cans for the police out of it. So, I would like to use these, those funds, the remaining funds in there will pretty much wipe out what's left over in the debt line, both the principal and interest to cover this expense.
Now, if we, if we opted not to do that, those funds would get returned back to the general fund and would be moved into the fund balance at the end of this year. The fund balance as it stands is will be at twenty-four percent. And our policy, if you'll recall, had, sets that that is to be between ten and twenty percent of our operating budget. Will be a violation of our policy. This is an opportunity to finish off a good community project using funds that we have available that we really can't take back into the fund balance as it stands. Questions, comments, observations?
Did we look at, like, anything that we could take out of the thing and do later?
We did, but the way the bid was put out, correct me if I'm wrong, the way the bid was put out, we can't do things kind of on an avant-garde, we'd have to rebid the, the project, and you're on the risk that the price could increase, go up.
I think the other incentive that was, we pared it down already from when we first got the prices, we took things out to get it under the five hundred. So, we had already used it before we put it out.
And we have
realizing it was gonna come in that much higher.
And we have a constituent that has caused the town to incur a bit more money by insisting on the installation of screening on the sites. So, that, that has affected the product a little bit, product cost a little bit as well.
So, we agreed to add screening?
We are gonna have to agree to add screening, yes, and it's in the land. It's in the, it's in the price, right?
I would entertain a motion that we allow the credit group to grant for the three hundred and thirty thousand to be utilized to offset the additional cost of that gate, and we just want to let you break playground
So, just, just to be clear, this is really a function of the board of finance to transfer the money. But we're bringing it to you guys so you're aware of what's going on, and so we can, you know, if, if your intention is to support the request, then we wanna record that. But we, we don't actually have the authority to move the money, that, that belongs to the board of finance.
I'll be asking them at my meeting later this month.
Did we have other plans for that, debt service money, W D?
Don't think so.
No.
Not that I'm aware of.
We did, we did reduce it and move it into CIP. Also for next, but
Peg, would you throw my motion?
You can still
And you can put it down as support.
Any other comments? Questions, concerns? So, seeing no objection, then the request of the board of finance is gonna be to transfer that, that money. Everybody done the same thing, we all understand that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Alright. Thank you. Oh, okay. As you guys know, I love to do, I made a little PowerPoint.
Somebody was groaning, I asked who was groaning.
So, beyond hard, that's all it was. I know what it was. Let's see if this works. Oh, Marie, can you minimize the the screens in the corner there?
The mouse, the mouse.
The assistant nineteen guy.
I remember that.
Got a few larger sources.
Okay, so why are we talking about the American Rescue Plan Act now? You guys probably heard the discussion coming out of Washington, DC. Um, you guys probably heard the discussion coming out of Washington DC that um Congress may intend to claw back some of the uncommitted funds. Um, and we certainly don't want to be returning federal money left unspent. Um, so we know we can accomplish quite a bit using the federal funds that we would not otherwise um be able to do using local dollars and and we want to capture that here before uh the, if Congress were to decide to claw it back. So just to recap on uh where things started. Um, last spring, we did a community-wide survey on how best to spend the American Rescue Plan Act dollars. We sent out more than nine thousand surveys. We got seven hundred of them back, which is actually a pretty significant response rate. Um, and of those seven hundred written responses, uh, people were really talking about a hundred and forty eight unique different response categories. Um, so those unique responses were then clustered into common interest groups. Uh, hard infrastructure, quality of life, private community investment, tourism, environmental quality, and hazard pay. Far and away, the most popular uh responses involved hard infrastructure, quality of life, and environmental quality. So keep in mind that funding can be used from the American Rescue Plan Act for almost any purpose with a couple of exceptions. We are precluded from using it for tax relief. We cannot use it to pay down pension obligations. We cannot use it to replace uh fund balance, uh funds that had been expended during the pandemic, although as we talked about, that's really not a concern for us anyway. Um, so here's an overview of ARPA from inception to date. We we were um originally allotted three point four five million dollars. Through the Erase Grant and the Community Center, we've committed two million forty three thousand seven hundred and fifty six of those funds. Um, and that leaves a total available balance of one million four hundred and nine thousand three hundred and ninety four dollars.
Can you repeat that number?
One million four hundred and nine thousand three hundred and ninety four dollars.
Thank you.
Give or take.
Thanks.
Um, so Amy and I looked at the projects that had originally been presented to the board back in October. And based on the funding that's now available, we have updated the recommendations that we're putting forward. These are just our recommendations. This is uh something that's gonna have to be a decision of our whole board together. Um, and ultimately also of the Board of Finance and then of town meeting. But in light of the congressional murmurs about refalling the money, um, we're advancing, what we're suggesting is that with the recommendations we're gonna put forward, that that we can agree on, we should move forward with those to encumber those funds so that they're not uh ultimately swept back if that comes to fruition. Um, and those things where we can't find consensus is the five of us, then, you know, we can part that uh funding stream and and have conversations about how else we might use it. But if there are areas where we can agree, it's now is the time where we need to move forward so we don't lose the funds. So the first one uh that we talked about in the in the fall and that we're bringing back is revitalization of Osborne Field and Volunteer Park. Um, one of the things that I like best about this project is that it's a parks project in the Warehouse Point section of town. Um, it distributes the quality of life investment that that the uh Capital T Town is making across our corporate limits so that there's some stuff in Broadbrook, there's some stuff in Warehouse Point. I think that's an important balance to maintain. Um, one of the things that we're looking to do here is install pickleball courts at Osborne Field as well or at Osborne Park, as well as make some additional um parks improvements that would really turn that into a place people can can congregate um and and recreate and enjoy. Uh, improvements to this park were specifically requested in the community survey. And we estimate that the project uh in order to do that would be about five hundred thousand dollars. The next one, and I know this one was something that the board may not have had u- uniform consensus on in the fall, but I'm bringing it back because I do think that there is a need. I think it's important. And I think even if we can address this on a durational basis, that still is gonna be something that's gonna be beneficial to the community. Um, so the geriatric social worker position could be funded for for three years, provides the critical intervention that seniors need in high-risk circumstances. And the social worker would be able to work in tandem with other mental health uh clinician and social work functions that are happening in the town through um actually right now through the police department. Geriatric social workers would help their clients manage uh psychological, emotional, and social challenges by providing counseling, support, and advising clients and their families about how best to support aging family members in the community and serving as a bridge of communication between clients and um the rest of their care team. I do think, and I I agree with others, that this is important as uh citizens get older, as residents get older. Um, uh move between inpatient and outpatient treatment programs, in-home care and day treatment programs. We know that there's a mental health urgency in the community. We know that mental health concerns were something that was uh prioritized in the community survey. Um, and what this would allow us to do is bring somebody in in onboard for a three-year period so we can aggregate the data as to whether or not we need to maintain this or at least uh address issues that we have for for the period of time while the funding is available. That happens all the time at the state level where they will provide for durational uh positions pending uh the availability of future funds, but at least they're getting some of that work done while the funding is there. And that's what we're putting out there tonight. We also are looking to replace uh emergency generators at three facilities in town. Um, the Public Works Garage, Town Hall Annex, and the Police Department, and the new Community Center. Um, these are all gonna be critical facilities in the event that we have a prolonged outage, uh power outage like we saw in two thousand twenty. Um, and over the last ten or twelve years, it has happened more regularly than I think anybody would care to remember. Um, we think we can get the three generators replaced for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and that's something that the town would need to do. Um, when when it's time to replace these, you know, whether it's local dollars or federal dollars, so it might as well be federal dollars. Bless you, sir.
Thank you.
Verification?
Yes.
Um, on the uh three, you have Community Center, new installation, is that for Town Hall?
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure. Hello?
Oh, it's Mike. Do you want to go ahead and mute Mike? Okay, uh Senior Center Bus. This isn't, this is another high priority area. There had previously been state grant fund, grant funds that were available to offset the cost of these to municipalities. The state has stopped offering those because uh it's it's become more difficult to even be able to procure the buses, so they're not offering the grants for something that people have had a difficult time doing. Um, one of the things here that I really want to stress is the hundred and thirty thousand dollars. We have a fresh quote as of the beginning of this week that that's what the cost of the replacement of a Senior Center Bus will be. When we were talking about this in October, it was eighty four thousand dollars. That's a fifty four thousand dollar increase in in seven months. And when this goes, we will have to replace it, you know, there. So this is another example of the feds could pay for it or the town can pay for it. This is something that that we will need in order to continue delivering the services that that we want to provide for. Um, we estimate that just the repair costs of the in-service bus could be as high as fifty thousand dollars. And once you repair it once, you know, you're gonna repair it again. Um, so it's better to to replace it while you can and and move along. Uh, the next thing, and this gets into the the notion of having things that are shovel-ready and ready to go. There are a lot of grant opportunities that are still out there for infrastructure and and uh facility improvement funds. Um, there's bond funding that's available through the state. Um, but you can't get to any of those things if you don't have the plans in place. And it's it's not a secret to any of us that the conditions at the High School Track are uh no longer hospitable for hosting events there. Um, they're honestly an embarrassment. And we're not gonna, the Board of Ed is not gonna be able to get to a place where they can replace that if they don't have the planning in place, they have the engineering in place. And this would allow for us to provide the funds to get that in place so that they can capitalize on future replacement opportunities. But without that, they're gonna be spinning in circles and uh in perpetuity. Walking trails were very, very popular, very popular in the survey results. That was uh one of the the higher responses. Um, and we we think we could do some trails improvements again through the procurement of the right equipment. Um, I don't know what the name of the equipment is. It's not a skid steer. It's it's a short, a smaller version of a skid steer. Joe's behind you. Yeah. Cool, yeah. Um, the other thing that the tool cat would allow us to do is use it for other purposes, could be used for uh uh snow plowing sidewalks or other other improvements of the like. We we would be able to make this available through municipal staff, through D P W staff, to other groups that may uh want to use it for the carving of uh walking trails, like if H R C wanted to do it. Um, but for a couple of times a year, we could maintain walking trails that would be available for people in the community. So this is a distribution of the ARPA funding opportunities as as revisited tonight. You can see where the distribution of costs would go. And again, the next process after the board of selectmen were to approve this would be that it goes to the Board of Finance for their consideration, then to a town meeting for a vote at the legislative body. None of these, all of these would require a town meeting. None of them would require a referendum. And so I'm gonna go back to that slide. That these recommendations equate to one point three million uh of the available one point four million dollars. Amy's gotta shave this down to a penny. Okay, so.
So what's the balance look?
Right now, we have two million forty three thousand seven six ninety two.
Yeah, minus the total for these projects.
Gives us one oh nine, three ninety four fifty.
So, I know some of these things were were not universally acclaimed when we talked about this last time. That's okay. Um, if, but if there are things that that we can agree on, um, I'd like to start off by at least moving those forward again because Congress is talking about taking the money back, and I'd rather spend it here than have it be spent by them someplace else. Um, so of the six things that are on the list, um, are there things that that we do agree on? Let's start with that and then see where things go.
Actually, before uh we talk about that, um, you said that the senior bus was a fresh quote. Are any of the resties, like the generator, Osborne? Um, specifically, I guess, those are the only other two. Are those like, how close are those?
Generators are close. Um, the tool cat is close.
We couldn't get that quickly enough, but by the.
I mean, like, like, these are fresh, like, are they fresh quotes? Do you know, like?
The the tool, the tool cast February.
How much is the tool cat?
That's a hundred thousand.
Hundred thousand, so that would just eat up that whole.
Yeah.
Trail length.
But it would be usable for trail maintenance as other groups move.
Um, H A H R C was looking for about thirty thousand for materials. So that would not be helping for that.
Or you could make that number a different number with the one oh nine that's left.
We still have a hundred thousand sitting available, so we can make thirty thousand available.
Or make that trail one one thirty.
Well, I was thinking that hundred thousand is a contingency of something like, you know, we go to build something and it actually is not five hundred and six hundred or five fifty five or. So.
I want to get. Are you, I see what you're saying.
So, you know, I guess, like, for me, the the senior bus is kind of a no-brainer and it's a solid quote. We know that's gonna happen there.
I would agree on the senior bus.
I agree.
Mm-hmm. One done. That's awesome. I'm very happy with that.
Well, I would have fifteen, eighteen months.
Yeah.
Yeah. But we'll be able to place an order.
Yeah, because the price will change.
Mm-hmm.
Based.
If we wait, the the price will change.
Thank you.
No, it was good for thirty days, forty-five.
And I would hoping there's agreement on the um track replacement for the high school and the equipment in order to, um, as we talked about previously, possibility of putting a track around the outskirts of the um Park and Rock Facility on Reservoir Avenue. I think we discussed that one time. Um, I could be wrong, but I believe that's where we talked about possibly using it. Um, so I would recommend that we move number five for.
The track engineering?
Yeah.
I'm definitely in favor of that and starting the process because it's definitely long overdue, having blocked it and recently it's since it is embarrassing.
What do you think that replacement would actually cost? I mean ballpark.
Dr. Trudron thinks it's one point five million.
No, so I was thinking too. So I was thinking one point one two or.
I think one point five is what came forward to C I P.
And and he's basing that on the kind of that field just replaced their track and that was their their cost. Now, that's, that makes that at least a year old. So, and there's not a quote associated with that. One of the things we were an engineer is at least a ballpark figure. What do we thought that?
Well, Joe and I, we ran on gravel. We're still here.
But Charlie, it was black and white. I haven't done that in a long time.
But the surveys also had a lot of interest in having uh ability, we say track, but um people use it to walk, cause you know, so I mean, it's gonna get a choose. You know, whether somebody is running or they're walking. Um, and that was one of the big things that people asked for um during the surveys that we did, so.
And it needs two more lanes.
Excuse me?
And it needs two more lanes.
In order to host regional needs or invitations.
Do we have the room for that?
Yeah. But it's gonna cost about two million.
Obviously, the price already been up.
Well, that's my. Pretty good at estimating.
So is there consensus on the track? The engineering of the track?
Yes.
Yes? Okay. Okay, is there anything else?
I think it's necessary for the Park and Mark project over on the other side of town, because there really isn't much over there right now.
What does that number represent? Just.
Um, so many walkways um at Osborne and fixing the pavilions or the gazebos at Falls Park that are on the park that are gonna have to come out with a safety issue if we don't take care of them.
So it's those things and the pickleball courts? Replacing all the gazebos?
Repair.
Repairing.
The pickleball court is a significant expense in the five hundred thousand.
And walkways that go down, they're 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 concrete walkways where the roots grow and through them and ramps and it's it's really difficult to get down. You know, it's very steep to get down. Once you get down, you're good, but it's very steep going down.
And then what about any of the equipment there? Is there some that's in pretty rough shape there?
Yeah.
Like playground type equipment?
Um, there's a swing set and a slide.
Yeah. Oh, we're.
Basketball court. Basketball. Which we just re did a few years ago.
Okay.
So when people are done with pickleball, what do we do with that court?
Tennis.
Like five years and nobody does that.
Unless you automatically make it a tennis court and then just line it as a pickleball court. It's not the same size.
It's not the price going. We didn't get the first for the for.
Oh, so we have, I mean, this, and again, and that was my other thing is we have like some recent quotes for this word.
We submitted.
December? Okay.
My C I P presentation, that was one of my answers.
Okay, so. If we're, are we done with the the discussion on parks improvements? I'm I'm not hearing a lot of warm fuzzies for that.
Well, I'm, it's not that I disagree. I mean, Warehouse Point is part of East Windsor and they deserve to have something nice on their side of technical utilize as well. I'm just, I don't know, I guess I'd like to see more of the breakdown of what everything costs.
We can.
Rather than just the broad.
No, and I'm 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 for it myself. I just wanted to make sure that we, if that's the number we're gonna use, we're gonna get it done and I'm just kinda joking about.
So.
Well, I did some research on the pickleball court. It is upcoming and I don't think it's gonna go away as quick as I thought it was gonna go away. But it was a phenomenon on TV. I was like, what are these people doing here?
So just so you know, what what the, what I was looking to do with these recommendations is tho- those that we can move forward, I'd like to get to the Board of Finance uh for their main meeting because our our second main meeting is just behind them and that puts us six or seven weeks before back in front of the Board of Finance again. I don't think Congress is gonna take the money imminently, but there is enough chatter out there to be concerned about it. Um, so the things that we can move forward on jointly, I'm I'm finding that and we can get more information. The things that we can move forward on jointly, I'm, I'm finding that and we can get more information and bring that back to either our, our second main meeting or our first June meeting. So what I'm gonna do, I'm, I'm seeing so far the senior center buses and track and your senior center bus and track engineering. We're gonna, we're gonna move those forward tonight to the board finance, we're looking for more information on Osborne Field. That leaves, uh.
That's not just Osborne Field.
As well.
Voluntariaer product also.
Just. We're, we'll get more information for, for that. Um, so that leaves us discussion on the social worker, the generators and the walking trails. Um, so what do you wanna talk about now?
Generators.
Generators, let's talk generators.
How much do they cost?
About sixty thousand a piece.
That's installed?
Installed.
So you don't have enough money?
Cause you're asking for three, right?
We have infrastructure that's already there that's providing, we don't have to put new switches in, but the one we replaced at the police station last year. Cost me sixty-two thousand dollars, while we had to put new switch gears and everything in. Should be able to use the same switch gear we have. It's the instructors there.
Okay.
Can, have we had anybody look at that? Our time, do we, like that and, or in town?
Won't be able to know until you decide on the generator you're buying. And then it's a matter of it's two phase or three phase switches in it and. But the switch, the, the switch, the annex, because we repurposed the police station generator that used to run the police station. Is a new switch, so I'm. A hundred percent positive that one will be fine. This D P W one, we're only single phase. Uh, we had a lot of problems trying to make that one work over there. So that one might need to be replaced. And the community center. There is no switch there, so we'll have to buy a switch, so. Why, that's why I was at a hundred fifty.
On, on for the generators, I just wanna make sure we have enough to do it.
Be. Enough. And then, you know, I, I cannot get a solid price on the community center until. The electric pulls in, you know, and, but. It is enough.
Is that one gonna take a bigger generator than like what you've got?
Take one the size of this one, a hundred K W.
Is that the same size as the police department?
Police department's a sixty K W and. And the annex and the public works are both sixties.
So with that, it's almost double.
It, it, believe it or not, the bigger you go, the cheaper the generator. Figure that one out.
I don't know. Okay.
It's actually the generator itself for the. For down there is cheaper than. The one in public.
And so the police department generator isn't big enough to do the police department and the annex?
The annex and the police department are wired different, there's a meter for the annex part that runs the ambulance bays and. The, the annex part, the police have their own meter, the power for the police department comes off Main Street, the power for. The annex comes off School Street.
And neither of those two systems?
No, it's a dead cutoff right at the doorway to the police station.
Well, like a high school. Somebody took a pile of spaghetti and just threw it on the page.
Well, I think, I think what happened is when they did the big renovation in oh seven. They put new power in there. Because it would have taken a hundred, a hundred and twenty K W generator run the whole building and it's. It. From the annex down is just really old and stuff. You know, actually, there's still. Just bare wire and porcelain in the old part of the annex.
Not, not a two.
Yeah. If it's just porcelain and bare wire.
See, we're all.
And our, and our, you know, I, I say our labor costs being down too because the infrastructure is there, so it's basically pulling the generator off, putting new one on. So we don't have to run wires from the generator into the building, all of that's there. So the cost factor drops there too. We had to rewire the whole police station.
If you're solid on the numbers, I'm, I'm all for the generators, I mean, I think especially at this point in time, the D P W should have.
Well, D P W has the one that used to be here.
Right.
And which, I'm not quite sure how old it is. But that, because I don't know when it was originally installed here, but when we did the, in. In thirteen, when we did the new heating system and everything, that generator wouldn't support the heating system, because it's all electric. But we put a hundred K W here.
And that's a sixty?
That's a sixty, and then. Public Works is only single phase power. So it. It. It's, it's a much cheaper, lower generator because it's only single phase. We actually have a base converter in there to run the welders and stuff.
I was gonna say, can you even run?
We have guys, with what, we have a base converter.
Fine with the generators. I'm fine.
Um, walking trails. Or geriatric social worker.
I'll go to geriatric social worker, um.
Band-aid off.
I mean, I agree that there is a need, but I'm just really concerned about. Funding a position and a program with a grant and, because very rarely do you. Stop offering a program when you have it and that's gonna be an added expense. To the taxpayers, so I. I just have some concerns about that. Um, because where is that money gonna come from if we do decide after three years we need it and. That's just. Where I'm concerned and of the three hundred thousand, like, is that all salary, is it programs too?
It was, uh, thought to be salary approach.
Hmm. I just don't think this is the way to go about it, because I feel like after three years, if we still need it. That's an added expense in the budget and. So the taxpayers have to pay for it at that point.
Other comments?
I don't have enough information to make a decision one way or the other, because I don't know what the geriatric social worker is actually gonna be doing. And who they're gonna fall, fall under, is there a process associated for somebody that's elderly that wants to use it and gets charged to the insurance company? Is it gonna be a free service to our elderly population? I don't wanna put it out, um. And ignore it because our population is growing more and more. Elderly than younger, we know that by virtue of, um, our school system numbers going down dramatically, um. And there's. Being of that age group and moving forward into that age group, um. To have something locally, um, and have it worked up at Park Hill, um, on the boards up there, there is a need, um, I'm just. Looking for the same as you, do you use the grant money and I'll use the school resource officer as an example. That was grant money and it was going to be for three years and it's probably now been. Three times that, which is a good program to have. Um. But we all know we have that two percent in our, um, so it's a concern that we won't be able to fund it later on down the road, so I agree with you on that, Sarah, but. But I think it's a necessary, um. Look at for the town.
Amy, um, in terms of funding a position durationally, do you have concerns about that?
What, saying that it's only available on the grandstand?
Yeah.
I think the residents who come to rely on them or use them will be the problem. Right, I mean, you can only use it for, for years, but first of all, you gotta get an employee willing to do that. And if they can get a better job somewhere else, it's not contingent on grants, they're gonna take it. Because then they don't have to worry whether they're gonna have a job three years from now, as they get mortgages or move to the area or whatever. Um, but I think the bigger thing is the concern to the residents that are using it. Because how do you take it away? If it's really popular and. Being used a lot and people are counting on that person to help them do what they need to do. And then we say, sorry, that person's no longer here.
Melissa, how's that function being handled now?
Funny. Currently, um. When we have a resident that is. In limbo between either staying in a vacant place in town or being moved into a facility. Um, my offices are working in tandem together to try and connect them to local resources, trying to work with their families that might not live in town. Um, trying to guide them as to, um, what might be available, what in-home services might be available, um. And. The list just keeps growing and a lot of the services that they're looking for. Um, a lot of our residents and clients right now, um, they don't have, some of them don't have the, the capacity to understand and make those decisions. So being able to help and guide them through that process so that they can stay in ancient place is something that we really need to consider. Um, and these are lifelong residents of this community, um, and it's, it's. Taking a toll on staff, I can assure you of that, um, trying to make sure that they are taken care of. And if they don't have family, uh, we're the only ones that they have. Um, and so trying to make those connections are very, very important. Um, for us as in our, in our goals that we have. And just continuing to grow. Day by day. Part of Jason about it on a weekly basis. Of who our staff load is and. We don't have any, um. Social workers on staff, like. We're not, we're, we're not social workers, but we're doing the best we can with the resources that we have. So we could really use a social worker. On staff.
I agree that it's important, but I have the same concerns and specifically that both you guys brought up, really. I see it, it being a popular and useful item and then that person getting just torched for years because that, you know. Nobody wants to pay for the, the budget, so it's like, and I. The other side of it is, it's gonna have to be approved even to start it. But that's only gonna maybe be thirty or forty people in this room and nobody will remember that thirty, three years from now that everybody wanted it. And I, I'm, you know, I think it's, it's not fair to that person, whoever that person might be. And it's not fair to, to the residents, so I'm not sure how we do this where we increase the possibility of it continuing past the three years.
So, um, I, I'm just gonna throw out two comments in, in support of the, it's my recommendation, so I'm gonna throw out three comments in support of my recommendation, I feel like that's fair. Um, first. We know there's a problem and we know the problem is growing and we know the problem is not going away. So if not doing it this way. You have to recognize that then we're gonna be deciding not to address this issue. That's, that's thing number one. Um, thing number two.
Opportunity to address that issue in the budget this year even, like, we could have said, look, we need this and we, and we should have maybe, and I didn't think of it, because I know we had talked about this before and then we put it on a shelf, but. We maybe should have put it in the budget and said, look, we don't put this in the budget and recovered for three years, if we do it this way, you know, so it, it gave people. You know. The ability to, to okay in the budget like we normally would with any position.
Yeah. Fair, but I, you know, I think that both the board of selectmen and the board of finance had, uh, the priority of making sure we were as, as least impactful on the taxpayers we could be in this budget cycle and, and. That, that meant a lot of the stuff that we would have tried to do, got put on a shelf, because we were working towards the goal that we all set through policy. Um, the second point that I would make though, is that it gives us three years to see if there's, if there is a need that is continuing or growing or diminishing. That's data, now we can, now in three years' time, where we're sitting in our seats in the board of finance can make a data-driven decision based on. The, the change in volume for service, based on, um, the extent of staff time and the complexity of the issues that are coming through, we would have data to make the decision. Um, though, though, I would make those two points, you guys know how I feel about this, I'm hearing the concerns that, that you're bringing out there, so to kind of bring us back to center. Um, I would ask for, for you, for you folks who have. Fiscal concerns about this. Is there any, is this something I'm gonna put in the more information might change my mind category, or is this something that we should move on from because you're just not gonna get there with?
No, I think your second, I think it was your second point that you said, that. We can, if we do this, we'll have three years behind us to decide whether or not. It's a good program to move forward with. Um. I personally think it probably will be. Um. Knowing what I know, it, it'll be well worth it. And it'll give three years for the town to get used to the fact that, you know, you're gonna have to fund something later on down the road, um, based upon the statistics and stuff. Um, rather than put something in place now where we know that. The evaluation and stuff coming up, we don't really have that three hundred thousand dollars. Um. To put out there as a what if. Um, it fails, but we can put it out there, what if it's, if it succeeds, we just got three years worth of. Services that are necessary, um. To the community and, and a cost to us, so.
And building on that point, we will not be able to put this in the budget next year. Um, so now we're signing up for another two years, two budget cycles of not addressing each. Um. Where things only get worse, and I'm not suggesting that, you know, you're gonna have, uh, you know, mass hoarding circumstances or, or, or things like that, but. There is the consideration that we, we won't be able to do this budgetarily. For at least two more years, which means it's two and a half years before this, this function gets, gets up to speed. Um.
And, and I think with the data, the police department have been personally on the mental health issue with the elderly, and I don't wanna speak out of turn, so correct me if I'm wrong, but with those statistics. Um, they've got it down to. The month they in time that somebody in town may. React. Um. So that's a good basis for us to, to work off, off of, um. And then I'm sure we can. Follow when they're shooting, do the same data over the course of time, timeframe, um. And work together with police department, um, if we have somebody that's there, just like we are with the youth social services plans, um. And we all know that mental health is, uh, rampant, um, recently, um. In communities that are all over, um, some physicians are saying it's due to COVID and the isolation, whatever, some say it's due to this and that and everything, but the world is changing and it's. I mean, every day something comes up that will irritate somebody, you know, the shootings everywhere. Elderly people are very concerned, um. Youth is concerned, I'm concerned, um, so. I would say based upon what you said, that, you know, starting something is better than not having anything, now whether or not we can be able to fund it because it's a temporary three-year position. That's another question, um. But it's an avenue. That's out there for somebody that's looking long-term, um, and if we make it long-term, maybe that person will stay.
It'd be better to look at it and to present it as a pilot program, a three-year pilot program, so. There's no commitment and.
I'm, I'm planning on it being a durational employee unless we, unless we fund the position and.
Need to negative, I think that if we were to say this is a pilot program, however you, whatever title you wanna say, uh, I think that makes it clear that to everybody. Including the users of the program who are most concerned with, uh, that it is temporary and then, you know, three years down the road. Who knows how things are gonna look economically, but.
I mean, I like Alan's suggestion there, I mean, I'm open-minded to receiving more information to try and change my mind, but tonight I'm not willing to. Move forward with it, I would need some more information and. Try to. I still, I just. Funding it, I just don't know that this is the right way, because like to your point when you said in two years, we wouldn't be able to do this. What about in four years when we still need the program and we're not able to do it, then what happens? You know, that's just what I'm concerned with.
Girl? Yeah, I recognize the need and I, I really believe there is one, I do like Alan's suggestions, if you're gonna do it. You know, open it as a pilot program. I think you're gonna have. An impossible time trying to find someone to build that position because mental health is so rampant right now and finding social workers is. Near impossible from what I've heard and to find one to take a pilot program position is gonna be even harder. Um. And I, you know, I, I have to agree with Alan, I really wish this had been put in this year's budget, um. Yeah, it would have been a little bit of an increase in our budget, but it would have been a hundred thousand dollar increase in our budget, probably wouldn't even touch the mill rate. No, but it would have been. We would take it, because we'd have the money, like, we would put the position in. But then said we were gonna fund it for three years. No, just, just put it in, put it in the budget, not even use this ARPA money for the position.
Your budget letters always say no, zero, ask for zero, so we ask for negative.
And, and you'll remember that Melissa's departments in particular came in flat.
I, I respect that, I, I understand, but I just think like a position like this, the taxpayers should approve.
I, I respect that. I, I understand, but I just think like a position like this, the taxpayers should approve. Because if the need is still there in four years, we can't fund it, then those people are gonna have a real difficult time and.
And who will be sitting at this table in four years to say, oh, well, this is what happened four years ago or three, you know, three years ago, and this is what they expected and every. I see, I see a disconnect there.
Why don't you give, uh, Melissa, Amy and I an opportunity to put some thoughts on page and we'll, we'll revisit this. Uh, I mean, I'm not hearing that this is a DOA thing. I'm hearing that we need to put some more meat on the bone. So give us, give us a, a couple of weeks to try and flush that out. Um, and then we'll come back. Uh, unless, unless I'm hearing you wrong and you bet it's like not worth the effort and, and just not gonna hurt my feelings. Tell me that.
No, I think it's worth the effort.
There's definitely a need.
Okay, I'll write it down. We're gonna be back.
So do we understand it, I'll put some uh, cattle improvement planning many, and we were looking for cost of pickleball courts. One hundred seventy-five thousand to two hundred thousand dollars for it.
Well, those were my numbers that I presented in October. And the breakdown for the other things I volunteered.
And the volunteer rehab replaced the truck over growth, picking tables and the disableds. Under the pavilion, no, that's eastward part, take that back.
It's, it's number, number, number five. Two hundred thousand for pickleballs at Osborne Park.
I don't see the, I don't see the other. Am I missing it?
No, I don't think you're missing it.
The other thing we could do is we could, we could lessen that recommendation and go with three hundred thousand for the installation of pickleball courts at Osborne Park. That's at least a step in the direction. It's not a full baseline.
With that, puts the gazebo's in jeopardy.
I'm, I'm all in favor of all it, so I'm not fighting it.
See something down there.
I don't have a problem moving the five hundred thousand for it because we know that's what the survey are coming in and they want more recreation, they want more areas. And I know, so gazebo, the little lights down there, I see people down there all the time having lunch.
And in all fairness here, we built a band shell. You know, we put a sidewalk down to the water. They've done a lot of work. Up on the park here. You know, the dog parks over here and.
I, I'm good with it. As long as we're good with the numbers, you know.
Well, we'll stay within our means. And the other thing that this year we spent a lot of time is we pulled a couple of the old baseball fields, the low-league fields out. We, we, we built them. We graded them, we seeded them, and we moved soccer fields there. So now it's a really nice soccer practice complex, especially for the, the smaller kids, the, and it, it really looks good down there, but that was the limit of we had topsoil left over at the, at the garage from where we're, where we got the field from you guys to do our recycle area. So we were moving it. So there was really no cost other than our winter time labor cost. And, you know, it's good busy work in the winter. So we, we've tried to work, you know, we keep that baseball field, so a prime field, we have irrigation, we fertilize it. But that's really where it ends, you know. And volunteer park.
I'd also like to see a sidewalk from warehouse point. From the, you know, downtown warehouse point. Has all sidewalks. And you can't, can't walk to the park. Right? You need a sidewalk.
Down south water, but fortunately, south water should be narrow.
It's tight, but.
Anything's possible.
So do you guys want more information on the Osborne Park Volunteer Park, or are you comfortable with the numbers that we're advancing?
I'm good with that.
Thank you for getting this for us.
Um, walking trips. So that's, that's the last one. Um, so we've explained that in order to carve out the walking trails, we need this particular piece of equipment that we do not have. It has other utilities associated with it. Um, the quote is from as recently as February, so we think it's still pretty close. Walk, walking trails and sidewalks were the two highest scoring, my recollection is they were the two highest scoring comments in the community survey. Um, but I'll, you pointed out that there's, uh, an additional need.
Yeah, and if you remember from when we first looked at this, I'm looking for, I have a spreadsheet from A H R C. And we do need to have them tighten it up a little bit, um, to make sure the numbers are right. But, you know, for the bridges, I mean, that's our one actual hiking, the only actual hiking trail in town that we have. And it's town on. It's not really a hiking trail. It's more of like a tick collection area. You can't go there when the state is in states and you can't go there when there's a field trial. And it's hard to know when that is and it's, you know, so kind of locals go there now and then, but it's not really our hiking trail. There is, so anything, Melrose is the hiking trail and there's more that can be built onto that around there. Um, we're already cleared by the state to build pretty much what we want there. There's town land, Jason. We've spent money on that, um, the bridge. Um, so I'd like to see that we at least entertain updating all of that. And, I mean, they've done a great job just getting, you know, little grant money and donations and stuff like that, but, um, I think you can do a better job if they actually just had funds, the funds to do the materials that were, that are really actually necessary for those bridges, rather than kind of making it work. So anyway. That was about thirty, thirty-five thousand, um, so. If we were gonna package something separately or as part of the trails, walking trails, I don't care how. But I, I think that people should know that they're voting for increasing and improving the Melrose State Park, uh, trail system. Um, I think that, I think that would see some, play a bit of support, actually.
Amy's recommendation is to do them as a, a package.
So anyway, so I'd like to say that, I guess, you know, at least a hundred thirty, but maybe we should wait on that and tighten up the A H R C quote and, and then come back to that.
Okay, so you're gonna get some homework.
I got it.
By May eighteenth or whatever the next one is, June.
Joe, wh- what attachments are you guys planning for that thing?
A trail mower for the front. Uh, a grapple for the front and a snow blower. Cause our intentions are, as weather permitting, you know, we can keep the trails open, that we can access. For snow shoeing, you know, even if we went in there and. Couple inches so they don't turn to mud, but. Uh, and, and our vision is like, I'm sure you guys have all seen this bonus property, what we did this summer, or this winter. So our vision is to work on clearing like that, but also using the COVID property for our first actual project. Making the trail white enough. So our machine, you know, basically our machine will go down through there and that's where we'd like to start.
Do you have any of those currently for your Bobcat or no?
We don't have the, the garage to stop. We don't, we have backhoe loader and, um, mini excavator. All too big to get, you know, we wanted to win low impact.
I understand, I just. It looks like the attachments are compatible with Bobcat or, and.
They are. It, it's, it's a Bobcat tool cat. But it's more of a, like a, uh, a, a T or an ATV stairwells. Yeah, it's like a side-by-side. It's got high flow for the hydraulics, so we can use that. And it'll help tremendously also with all the new sidewalks Alan put in.
Okay, that's not lost on me.
But I wish we had sidewalk, at least the fourth people to actually use that. My neighbor, we still like to work down the middle of the street, my sidewalks. Still don't understand, but.
Okay, so we're gonna, uh, hold off on the walking trucks, put the thing until you can tighten up the quote and then we'll advance something that's a package deal.
And I'll have a solid price on that.
Okay, um, so. I'm, I'm showing that we've spent six fifty and another two fifty is nine hundred thousand dollars. Um, there's some more work to do between the social worker and the trails. It's gonna be another three and a half, no, uh, four and a half. So we still have some available uncommitted funding.
The three years is driven based upon when money has to be used in spec, right?
I think that was the original.
Yeah, it has to be committed by twenty-four and has to be spent by twenty-six.
Unless they take it in twenty-five.
Well, actually, at the conference, I was just at, they talked about taking it, multiple different presenters. Talked about them tuning back, that there's been conversations where it's actually been in like bills or proposals and then scrapped. But it's already been out there.
Well, and the debt ceiling is coming up and there's gonna be some, some concession at some point on the debt ceiling. So, I mean, Amy's heard from, from professional speakers more recently than I, um, I haven't heard the, the same urgency around the municipal C P O circles. But it's something we, it would be tragic to, to give money back. That's why we're trying to commit like what we can agree on and, and get that done.
You know how I like to talk about sidewalks? So we had sidewalk that we've been working on. There was a grant.
We're, we're waiting for the state to approve the plans. It's, it's there, the money's there.
Okay, so we have the money for the whole loop.
Well, we have the state portion. The town needs probably about a couple hundred thousand.
Okay, so.
Once we put it on the bid, I can give you an exact number of.
Um, and to my, my point was that we're, maybe we ought to look at some of this money to go to that. Because, you know, that's all grant money and I'd rather not have to put in any taxpayer money or taxpayer-generated money. Well, it's all taxpayer-generated money, but. State grant?
Uh, connectivity grant. It was three hundred seventy-four thousand, but that was the price of it back in two thousand thirteen, when we started or fourteen. So if, by my estimate, it's gonna be between a hundred and fifty and two hundred thousand dollars, what we're gonna need.
Amy, how much is in sidewalk?
We used it.
Where else would, um, sorry. I'd see you walking on it. Not like this guy, John, they know how to use them over there.
Anyway, there's a little money in the, in lieu of, but that's for repairs you can't, I, I really, I would recommend taking because we have some we have to repair.
But that, that isn't a, a budget number that's ready to roll. Nor would it be in the next two to four weeks.
Well, I can, I can come up with a closer budget number by doing the square footage and uh, but.
By today's rate for concrete.
Well, it, you know, it, it, yeah, I mean, I can come close, but, you know.
I mean.
Until the end of it, I can't have an exact number, but not touching that money in lieu of I'll be close.
Um, so even if like, so my point is, if it, if it's gonna cost, I forget what the grant was, five hundred thousand or six hundred thousand?
The grant is three hundred, we have three hundred and seventy, I wanna tell you, three hundred and seventy-four thousand.
Right, okay, so the, the total project was close to six hundred. We're talking now, right?
No, that, that was a hundred percent.
It was three seventy-five when we got it.
Right, no, what I'm saying, now you think it's closer to five or six?
I'm thinking it's probably closer to five.
Right, so I'm just saying if we throw at least some of this money in that pot, if we cover it good, if we can't and it's close, then at least we're not looking for two hundred K when the rest of this comes around. I don't wanna, I don't wanna jeopardize that grant and, you know, and you hear people all the time, rightfully so, complaining about trying to not get hit on people's trees, like Frogger over there, so this, that fixes that problem.
So, just hear me out. Uh, so if we were to reduce this geriatric social worker down to a hundred thousand pilot program for one year, pay for that out of the ARPA money and then with the intention that if the program is successful, then we'd be looking a year after that, um, to put in the budget.
Based on the way our budget works, I don't think that there would be enough time to aggregate any, uh, an update to show success in a one-year period, because you're talking, you know, we're reconstituting the budget in about six months. Sure, six months after the beginning of the fiscal year. That's not a lot of time to be able to demonstrate it.
Never mind getting somebody hired.
So, just to kind of bring the, the conversation to, to a point here. We have four, four projects where there's consensus amongst us on to move forward with as is, and there are, um, two and a half things that would require some additional, um, due diligence that we can bring back. One other thing I wanted to put up here, just so you guys can. I mean, on this list, are, are there other, uh, are there other things that are priorities of you guys that we should discuss or you want flushed out, um? Or anything that jumps to mind? Al, I knew you had the A H R C concern and I wanted to, should we talk about that? You know, I, I honestly couldn't recall if the other three of you have things that were brought to mind seven months ago. If, if not, we have homework to do and I'm, I'm happy to have, have our team start putting that together. But what I would like to do again, with, with the interest of urgency, um, I'd like to ask for a motion to advance the senior bus recommendation, the track engineering recommendation, the generators recommendation, and the Osborne Field Parks improvements, uh, recommendation. Um, that way the board of finance can take that up and maybe on, I think it's the at least seventeenth. Um, and then when we get back together on the eighteenth, we can, um, kind of examine what we're able to come up with on, on these other. But that, at least we're moving something forward here to capture some momentum.
Do you want them all together in one motion or?
That's fine.
Okay, um, I move to advance to the board of finance for, um, consideration with ARPA funding. Um, the senior center bus in the amount of one hundred and thirty thousand dollars. The East Windsor High School track replacement engineering in the amount of one hundred and twenty thousand dollars. The emergency generators in the amount of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And the Osborne Field Volunteer Park improvements in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars.
Is there a second? Motion has been made and seconded. I could offer a friendly amendment to that, just to, to encourage that, or just to state that if approved by the board of finance, that it'd be sent for town meeting.
Okay, true, yeah.
Any further discussion?
Cause when you look at that list up there, a lot of the things, there's a lot of things on that list that have already been taken care of to other grants.
I saw that too.
Just thinking that.
Plaguing and for people going on, taking the extra for grant money, a lot of that stuff has been taken care of and we go we quest that are coming forward from the departments. We question it coming forward from the departments that we got extra money here. What can we do to transfer it over to? A lot of this stuff is taking care of itself already. Um so.
It was it was a good exercise to go through just to generate um a a priority list.
Yeah, my reading was a nightmare.
I read them all.
What do you do? Um but. And then some some of the rest of the stuff, you know, um will correct itself every room for in the water problem for the grant money that's out there, the grant money available to this. Park Hill, hopefully if that gets paid. Um so a lot of that stuff is done. Trees on top of property playgrounds, the expansion um. Our transportation procedures will take care of it here. Um the rails to the trails. That's being worked on. Um so there's a bunch of stuff. On there. You can keep going and going and going, but. I think we're getting there.
So there's a motion on the table. It's been made and seconded. If there's no further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Post. I appreciate you guys. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay. Um hmm. I'd ask to postpone agenda item nine F. Uh I have some concerns about the release of the bond pertaining to a wetlands concern that I didn't have a chance to get up on stat yet. So if we could just park that till the next meeting.
I'll move to postpone agenda item nine F. Discuss and approve West River Farms Bond Release until our next meeting.
Second.
Uh all in favor of postponement, please say aye.
Aye.
Post. Oh, oh.
Later.
Uh statues. Yes. Um okay, our next item nine G um. You know, if you wanna take off, I think I'm also gonna be um. Thank you for hanging.
Thank you.
Appreciate you stood up. Um so last year, you'll recall, we partnered with the Connecticut Trolley Museum to apply for Neighborhood Assistance Act grants. Um they were successful in getting um Mike Speciale is is with us, so he can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we got a forty thousand dollar grant. Um that was offset by a donation from Cigna. Um Mike, can you remind us what that project was for?
Yeah, um is the audio okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, uh it was actually, it was forty five thousand dollars we got from Cigna. And it was to replace all of our lighting lamps with the high efficiency lights and fixtures. And that work was completed as of the other day. So it made a dramatic difference in the appearance uh of the museum. This was uh for interior lighting, exterior lighting. Uh lighting along the parking lot, uh outs- outbuildings and all that. So we're gonna save a lot of money. We got a lot of uh improved lighting. So uh the way it works is just to refresh everybody quickly. This is the Neighborhood Assistance Act. So uh we would like to apply for it, but we need your blessing. The Board of Selectment, we need the official blessing of the town of East Windsor. If you approve it, uh Jason will send it off to the state and we'll get on a list of approved projects. This year, what we're proposing to do is to install a uh a ductless heating and cooling system. And the visitor center office areas. Uh when the building was built up in the mid nineteen eighties, wasn't much thought, I guess, or money or whatever given to efficiencies. And as a consequence, we are actually cooling. All of our interior office space with air conditioners, window air conditioners, and we have electric baseboard heat. A horrible. So we're uh proposing to uh uh. Conduct a project this year to do the installation of the new heating cooling system for eighteen thousand five hundred dollars. And what I will have to do, once it gets approved on the list, I will then have to go find a business or two. To actually contribute the money to us in December, which will earn them a hundred percent tax credit on the contribution. On their uh income tax, business income tax return. So in essence, uh like what Cigna did last year. When they gave us forty five thousand dollars, they sort of fronted the money because then they claimed the credit on their tax. So I I hope that's clear. I hope. And again, thi- this time it's another energy efficiency project. And it is specifically for heating cooling at the office.
So um we did, we did work with the Connecticut Trolley Museum uh last year on this. I I would say that's that's being generous. Mike and his team did all of the work. The obligation on on the town side is so minimal. But it's an opportunity for us to be able to support them as they solicit uh corporate contributions to get a a tax offset, so. I I'm more than happy to uh extend the same opportunity to them this year, because, I mean. I don't think this was half an hour's worth of work on the part of the town. Um and the end result was really beneficial to the Trolley Museum. I'm fully supportive of doing it again, but. If we were to move forward, we need to check the boxes that are required, which is the next thing would be for us to hold a public hearing. And then to have a a a vote in support of their application, and then that needs to be in the minutes prior to the submission of the application on the on the first in trial. Good. So we'll get the public hearing scheduled then um and then take it from there.
Yes, we need to authorize you to sign this.
Uh you can uh you'll need to once we have the public hearing.
Okay.
Um. You know, I I take the authorization now, but that'll be a down.
Okay.
All right. Mike, I think you're good.
Okay, thank you. Uh ladies and gentlemen, I appreciate your help.
Yeah, Melissa Lobell will be in touch with you about uh scheduling the public hearing.
Great, okay.
All right, thanks. All right, so that brings us to Patrick.
I'll move to approve the tax refunds totaling six thousand three hundred and seventy nine dollars and seven cents.
Second.
Motion's been made. Any discussion?
How much did you say was what?
Six thousand three seventy nine oh seven. Yeah, okay.
My eyes went the wrong way. I said, where the hell are these people getting so much money back?
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post.
Sword. Did you wanna take up nine I?
Yes. Um so. I will back up. Hold on, hold on, sir. So we had um the opportunity to have uh Karma, our risk management agency, come into the town. Uh and do a a training on uh diversity, equity, belonging, and inclusion. Um this was back in. It was back in March. Um and one of the com- comments that came up in that um conversation was who had recently read. Their the policy on pick a policy. Um I actually think it was the sexual mother, other unlawful harassment policy. Um and. People raised their hand and then the question was, how many people have read it within the last year? A lot fewer hands went up. So what we're doing now is through the senior staff meetings that are held once a month. We're reviewing each of our standing policies. Um and then if there are no changes or or corrections that are necessary to it. Um s- senior staff are being asked to have their employees review the policies and return the the. More recently signed policies back to my office and that'll be done on an annual basis. Um. There is. In the course of the conversation with Karma, it came out that uh or came up that a hostile uh work environment doesn't necessarily occur between two employees. Um it could occur between uh a board and commission member and a municipal employee. It could occur between a member of the public and a municipal employee. Uh you guys are all aware that there is a particular constituent who enjoys coming to uh a commission. And creating a hostile work environment. And what I would like to do, once we update this policy. Um is ask every warden commission in town also to review and affirm their their acquiescence to the policy. Um so that they know that they have a role in making sure that they are not creating um in inhospitable work environment for professional staff. Um I I think this is something that just makes good business sense. I think it's also something that's long overdue. Um and I wanna make sure that everybody knows that they they need to be held the same standard that employees are. Um so I sent our policy off to Pullman and Comley for their update and review. Um attorney Sharon with Pullman and Comley did mark it up and send it back. Those comments were included in the uh package. Um oh, I'm sorry, they were included by a separate email. Um. So what I would like to do is discuss any of the changes anybody has concerns with. If you don't have concerns with the changes it's presented. I'd like to accept the policy and then I'll distribute it to boards and commissions so that they can um they can move forward on their review and and sign off. Sound like a plan? Is that clear?
Yes.
I pointed out that the WPCA. The authority itself is appointed by the selection and before we should be approved.
You will be. Every every uh appointed or elected board of commission is going to be in board uh tasked with reviewing and signing off on it. Um as will every municipal employee on the updated version.
What happens if someone chooses not to sign it?
In terms of an appointed official?
Hmm.
I think that would probably weigh pretty heavily on their reappointment. As far as I'm concerned.
Okay. So just another question on those lines. Going forward. In in appointments, will new appointees be given this?
Yes.
And made to sign it once they've been appointed?
Yep.
And we'll be tracking a list of people who've signed it, so we make sure that that's.
Yeah, we we need to do that in my office now. Um and. From purely from a risk management standpoint, just just documenting that, you know, we are encouraging or or requiring people to do that in protection for the town. If if there's the an instance where there's an appointed member who wouldn't sign the document. We would simply make note of that, saying that that it was presented to the employee or the to the member on X date and they refused sign off. But at least we're showing. From a risk management perspective, that we're taking the steps we need to to educate the people who are involved in the local government, what their responsibilities and obligations are.
Are there any um trainings available um for the volunteers that are chairman of the various boards and commission um? That. Somebody can come out and pray and run a meeting um or their liabilities are, because I think um I know, and I don't wanna. Point any volunteers out because volunteers are volunteers and I respect. Or whatever they're able. There have been some things that I have been concerned that have been that are done um that. I don't think it's done facetiously and I don't think it's done with the intent to ignore something. I just don't think some of them know any better because they would never talk properly. Um so in conjunction with this, maybe we could do some of that other stuff too. I just don't have that.
Uh I'm happy to talk more about that.
Yeah.
Questions or concerns about the uh amendments as presented? Can I have a motion to accept the amended policy?
Make a motion to accept the amended town of East Windsor sexual and other unlawful harassment policy statement.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Um. We're on now to select, selecting comments and reports. Um I'm gonna suggest we hurry this along a little bit. Um because we do have a guest who is uh waiting to participate in our executive session and I don't want him to wait too long. Um. It's a little thing. Take my advice. Okay, on April twentieth, I met with the Hartford Community Court Chief and with Judge Harris Biao at Parkerport. Um I was joined by Community Services Director Melissa Malpassi, Deputy Police Chief Matt Carl, and our Police Department Social Worker Brittany Bryce. Judge Harris Biao and her team gave us an overview of the role that the community court can play in the region, which now is inclusive of the town of East Windsor. Court handles cases pertaining to municipal ordinance violations, substance abuse, mental health issues, and has a heavy focus on community-based minor offenses. The court also provides an opportunity for additional social work resources to the town. Um and the judge was very gracious with her time and I hope to have her here as a guest at a future Board of Selectment meeting. She she indicated she'd be willing to do that. Um that same day, I went to the state Capitol to meet with the leadership of the Energy and Technology Committee to advocate for local control concerning the citing of grid-scale solar projects. Under existing law, municipalities municipalities have no say in the citing or zoning conditions of those projects. Um at the at that meeting, I was joined by representatives from the Council of Small Towns, as well as municipal leaders from the towns of Can- Canterbury and Brooklyn. I appreciate Representative Foster facilitating the discussion with Representative Steinberg. And being so open and collaborative as we search for a solution that will give towns like East Windsor a voice concerning these developments. Um later on, the town will be discussing an engagement letter with the law firm of Uppide Kelly and Spalss. Um which would potentially serve as an advocate for the town's interests before the Public Utility Regulatory Authority and the State Citing Council. On April twenty fifth, I had the opportunity to visit with constituents at Park Hill and talk with them about their concerns, and I did the same thing on Mar- on May third. Uh at the East Windsor Senior Center. These visits are always an interesting opportunity to get feedback from uh members of of the public, where I get to hear directly from them what their concerns are and and what their questions may be. Um I'm also happy to see that attendance at both of those events, although already pretty good, is continuing to grow. Later that same day, on the twenty fifth, I met with Erin Haranzi, the new librarian at the Warehouse Point Library. She's only been on the job for about two weeks, um but I was immediately impressed by her energy. She literally came bouncing out of her office. Um and and her energy is definitely going to be contagious. Her interest in becoming more involved with the community is wonderful and her savvy and understanding of how to work collaboratively with the town was was very important too. I think she's gonna be a great fit for the library and I think she's gonna be uh she's gonna do some really great things for the community in her time here. On the twenty seventh, I was pleased to join seniors and volunteers at the Senior Center for their annual volunteer apprec- appreciation lunch. We celebrated two dozen people or so who tirelessly give themselves to provide meals on meal services to residents in East Windsor five days a week. One of those volunteers, Captain Crouch, has been delivering meals weekly since nineteen eighty one. Um just as a frame of reference, I was born in nineteen eighty two. That in all seriousness, that is a tremendous service that you could give if we thank Kathy and all of our generous volunteers. We're still seeking small business participants that may be in, small businesses that may be interested in participating in the second annual Small Business Passport Program. Um any interested local restaurant or retailer establishment can contact my office or East Windsor Chamber of Commerce for details. Um on a somewhat more somber note, um in in light of. Really the ongoing horrible news that permeates constantly around mass shootings in in the United States. Um our emergency management team has been working to develop an active shooter response training that would be uh that would provide training. To all of our first responders, police, fire, EMS, public works, community services, and public school staff. Um it it was yesterday uh where we met with representatives from the town of Talland and from Towne County Dispatch. To review the training that they offer, uh and we're looking into resources that are recommended by the FBI National Academy. The hope is to provide comprehensive training sometime this summer and to continue it regularly. While we don't, we certainly hope never to have to deal with that here, uh and we don't expect ever to. Um it's it's when you're not prepared for it that that you need to have the most preparation and um we're taking steps that are. Probably long overdue, but are very encouraging and very proactive to make sure that uh. All of our team, our our whole townwide team, has the resources that they need to to respond if they're ever called to. Um on May eighth, the Greater Together Community, Greater Together Community Committee will be hosting a meet and greet at the Town Hall Annex at six thirty. You can come and meet with committee members to learn more about what the funding opportunities allow for, what types of projects have been funded in the past and what the committee may be looking for in this year's submissions. On May ninth, voters in East Windsor will vote on the annual budget proposal prepared by the Board of Finance. This year's proposal includes a mill rate decrease of one tenth of a mil from thirty four point three eight down to thirty four point two eight. Polls will be open at the usual places from six AM to eight PM. And finally, as many of you know, and all of you know, but uh an announcement to the public. Um the town is in the process of selecting a new police chief after the retirement of former Chief DeMarco after nineteen years of service. The process has been expansive and the town has utilized the services of of a professional executive recruitment firm. As the process nears its conclusion, there will be an opportunity for the general public to meet the four finalists for the position. That public meet and greet will be on May fifteenth from six thirty to eight PM at Scout Hall at twenty eight Abbey Road. All are welcome to attend. And the executive recorder will be on hand to intake feedback from the general public as the finalists are selected, that then the uh selection committee will be able to incorporate into their decision making. That's my report. Marie, what do you have?
I enjoyed my vacation while it is gone. Um I have nothing to report to you. I have any meetings scheduled.
Fair enough. Alex.
Oh, yeah, okay, so I was able to um attend planning and zoning, but I did review all the minutes. Oh yeah, okay, so I, I was able to um, attend planning and zoning, but I did review all the minutes. Uh, and then, you know, they're just kind of going through some uh, basic permits for the most part, but they did approve the portable housing plan. Um, they also started looking at a draft for the um, for a resolution for um, stating the town's position for the citing of solar panels. Um. There, uh, they, I guess maybe, maybe the, the most impactful thing that they're working on right now is a public hearing at a hundred and eighteen Prospect Hill Road for a trucking terminal that backs up to the neighborhood there, so nobody's shown up really to, from that neighborhood, I hope they were all uh, made aware of it, because, you know, the beeping from the backup alarms and stuff like that is, is potentially gonna be an issue. That's continued to five nine, so maybe somebody, I mean, the public will um, have some input there, but so far, none from them. Um. And on the ninth as well, they'll be talking about playground for the, up here, so, um, I don't know if you want to look at that or not, but that's all they have going there. Uh, Wetlands was canceled this month, there were no application, and the pension board met last night, went over the quarterly results, also, uh, we had a present, presentation from the OPEP representative, kind of just gave us the health of OPEP, um, fund and, which is the other employment benefits. Um, and some suggestions on how to utilize that in the future. Also, there's four pension negotiations coming up, Public Works, WPCA, supervisors and nurses, nurses were part of the unaffiliated, and now they have their own union, so now they need a, a pension and appendix. So we've been hearing a lot more about that coming up. That's all I have.
Thank you. Sarah?
Okay, I attended the April Arts and Culture Committee meeting. Um, the meeting was mainly focused on finalizing the details for the Arts and Culture event, which will be held on Saturday, May twentieth, from twelve to four at East Windsor Park. There will be vendors displaying their art, acoustic music, demonstrations, and activities. There will also be a community artwork piece that says East Windsor has heart with the A R T capitalized. There has been collaboration with the Trolley Museum and the Broadbrook Center for the Arts. There's three high school students that are currently working on the car cards of local businesses that will be displayed in one of the trolleys. Committee member Sharon Apria painted a sample of the mural that will be displayed at the elementary school to receive feedback from the group and to be sent to the school for approval. Um, the Veterans Commission did hold an April meeting. They are hosting a contest and theme for this year's Memorial Day Parade, which will be on May twenty nine. The theme is most patriotic. The first place winner will receive a two hundred and fifty dollar donation to a charity of the winner's choice, and second and third place will receive trophies. If you or your group is interested in participating, please contact Chairman Jim Barton at djbarton422@gmail.com. The deadline to be put in the program is May nineteen. The commission unanimously decided to donate seven hundred and fifty dollars to the East Windsor High School Music Program, and will also be awarding Katie Wise with a five hundred dollar contribution for singing at the Memorial Day Parade, and as a thank you for always making an effort to sing at Veterans Commission events. The commission had nine applicants for the two scholarships that they award to an East Windsor high school senior. Um, those are in the amount of a thousand dollars each. They did review them and choose the scholarship recipients, but I won't spoil who that is, because the winners will be announced in June. Yesterday, Chief James Barton of the Warehouse Point Fire Department took me on a tour of the Fire Department Headquarters Building next to the firehouse. It was nice to see their emergency operations area and their preparedness in case of an emergency or tragedy. Eventually, the space that was freed up will be used for sleeping quarters and give fire personnel more space now that the offices are moved to a separate location. Last night, Selectman Ordell and I attended the Tippecop event to benefit the Connecticut Special Olympics at the Main Fish Market. It was great to see several of our officers, as well as interim Deputy Chief Matt Carl there. Nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars was raised in three hours. There is also a torch run associated with this, which will take place on June first, where we will have a team running from the Enfield Town Line to the South Windsor Town Line to pass on the torch. The Kids Fishing Derby, sponsored by the Broadbrook Angling Club, is this Saturday, May sixth, at East Windsor Park. Registration is from seven to eight AM, and the derby is from eight to eleven. The event is open to kids fifteen and under, and there will be prizes awarded for the first fish caught, largest fish caught, as well as the first person to catch their four fish limit in each group. Um, and as Jason said, please remember to vote in the Town and Broadbrook Fire Department budgets on Tuesday from six AM to eight PM. And I believe the Warehouse Point Fire District is voting on their budget Monday night, at what time, seven?
Seven o'clock, Station One.
That's all.
Thank you.
So I can order. Okay, on, um, April twenty fourth, the BMXK Park net, um, they're uh, investigating a company that will do free of charge, um, even tease, and they help, um, communities like them with media sites and announcements of events, sponsors, and uh, even payments for such events. Uh, they've been having a tough time getting and continually updating their Facebook and social media. So they looked to this person to uh, see if he could help them get on track and, and keep that stuff up to date.
So it's, it's Eventies?
Eventies, yes, you are right, it is.
It's my roommate.
Yes, Doug Hanks.
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah, so, yeah, they're looking into that, um. The Rubber Duck and Cardboard Rose is supposed to be on July ninth this year, which is cool, because I'll actually be able to attend, it won't be when I'm normally on the nation. Um, they're also planning their second annual bottle and can drive, which will take place currently July eighth and September ninth this year. Um, and then the rest of the meet, they spent finalizing their plans and preparations for their golf tournament, which is happening across from here on May twentieth, and they believe they are all full already, and now all their teams, that they can actually host on it. And they've got some great prizes, and they did a really good job. This has been a dream of theirs for a long time, for many years, to do such a an event, and it's finally coming together for them, and they really done a good job, they're pulling it off. Um, and uh, let's see, that Monday, there was Warehouse Point Fire Department meeting. Um, basically, they, it was a short, quick meeting, uh, they took sixty three calls last a month, and they completed, the fire marshal completed like nineteen um, inspections were done on that side of town. And like Sarah mentioned, their budget vote is this coming Monday at seven o'clock at Station One for their budget. Um, the twenty sixth, I went to the Board of Education meetings, just fairly short meeting, with the exception of their third quarter awards, which they held in the beginning of the meeting. Um, the, the students were picked from each school, um, the recipients for all the third quarter awards, as well as the Crystal Apple Award recipients, and the winners of Parks and Recs, uh, and our announces were all announced in that meeting. Uh, they also just, um, made the official last day of school, June thirteenth, for this year's, um, seeing that there will be no more, um, hopefully inclement weather days, and I'm predicting any more snow. Uh, so they set the last day of school for June thirteenth. And um, the East Windsor High School Mount Congress is planning an overnight field trip uh, to AIC in Springfield, Massachusetts. And uh, everything else uh, has already been mentioned, so that's it, thank you.
So, uh, we're gonna go on to the second public participation, this is the public second opportunity to address members of the Board of Selectmen. As always, first I will address anybody who's in the room who would like to address the Board, and then I'll ask Peggy if she had anything to say. Uh, yes, or name and address.
Tell me, quickly, right, bro, that someone just give a minute, uh, the Department of Public Work, they did a tremendous job on the development plan. That'd be the ideal place to put the first walking trail. It's flat, it's easy trail, and it'd be perfect. While you're on the Board of Finance.
Good crashes.
And it's not rocky.
Thank you, sir. Other comments? Peg, would you like to add anything? Okay. Um, we will have an executive session, um, and ask for a motion to go into executive session to include Attorney Bob DiCresenzo. Um, and then we'll, and when we come out, there will be two action items to take up under unfinished business. I have a motion to go into executive session, salute.
Thank you.
Mo- motion has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, we are in executive session at nine fifteen PM. Uh, Peg, I'll try and get the uh, the reporting up as quick as possible. Alright, it is ten fifty PM, uh, we are out of executive session, two items of business to come before the Board of Selectmen. Um, first item of business is agenda item eight B, uh, discuss and vote on the contract between town and Jennifer Sanchez. Is there a motion?
I'll move to authorize for selectmen to sign a contract between the town and Jennifer Sanchez with adjustments.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Charlie, seconded by Marie, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Um, agenda item eight C, discuss and vote on an updated conflict council engagement letter with Uptight Kelly and Spalcey for representation before the Connecticut Citing Council on Solar Matters. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to uh, authorize for selectmen to sign the updated conflict council engagement letter with Uptight Kelly and Spalcey for representation before the Connecticut Citing Council on Solar Matters.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Alan, seconded by Sarah. Um, for discussion, I would just note that the town is engaging Uptight Kelly and Spalcey to make sure that the town's best interests are represented when the Citing Council is discussion, discussing the citing of solar, that we have had, we have done more than our fair share in terms of this, uh, helping the state meet its renewable energy goals. And uh, if, if legal representation is the remedy that we need to pursue, that that's something that, that we collectively feel, um, needs to be done. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carried. Is there any further business to come before the Board of Selectmen?
Move to adjourn at ten fifty-two.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's made and seconded, it's non-debatable, all in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no. We are adjourned at ten fifty-two.